Let's come to order, please. Let's do the pledge of allegiance to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have the invocation by Adam Davis, Minister of Music at the First Baptist Church.
Father, tonight we recognize that all authority comes from you, and we know that according to your word, those in positions of government were put there by you, God. So we pray tonight that you will give wisdom and guidance to those who lead us, and we pray that their decisions will be in the best interest of this city and its people. And we pray that this year will be a time of growth and prosperity for the city of Lowell. We pray also tonight, Father, for the meeting tonight. We pray that it will be productive, that it will be beneficial. We pray that those here will be able to communicate their ideas and their opinions clearly, and that there will be a free exchange of ideas here tonight. But above all, we just pray that everything we do will be for your glory. Pray this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming out on this cold night and invite you to come
back again. Thank you. Roll call.
Camila Lamons.
Here.
Ted Morrell.
Here.
Eric Schein.
Here.
Darren Brock.
Here.
Keith Williams.
Here.
Carol Harmon.
Here.
Marty Latham.
Here.
Sean Ingram.
Here.
Thank you. We'd like to do a presentation by the Rogers Lowell Chamber of Commerce at this time. Mr. Greg Stanfield.
It's fine. You bet. The first thing I'm going to do is I'm going to put on my artist's bank pass and do that first.
That's fine.
This is one of the, I've been here before, this is one of the fun parts of my job. We have a great working relationship with Walton Family Foundation, and it's my pleasure to present to the whole police department a check for $4,300 for our police equipment. And hopefully that'll help soften the fact that our allowance has been going off the main for the last three nights. Two o'clock in the morning. So, now, Chamber, it's also my pleasure to serve this year as the chairman of the Rogers Lowell Area Chamber, and this is our annual Chamber Night, and I hope you enjoy the cookies and the coffee that we had tonight. This is just our way of hoping to kick off a good year for everybody, the new and existing elected officials. Our way of saying that the Chamber is here for you, and we want to be a partner and do anything we can for bettering this community. So, we just want you to know that we're here for you. We wish you luck and progress this year. So, we have a few gifts for you tonight, and I don't know if I can hand those out real quick.
I'd like to thank the Chamber at this time for the reception they provided for us. The cookies were really good. Thank you. Thank you, Greg. I'd like to hear a motion to amend the agenda. We've got four items that we would like to add to the agenda.
I would like to make that amendment, and number one, you were given some information on a gas relocation project by McClellan Consulting Engineers. Needs to be done in conjunction with the waterline project on Dixieland relocation. The next, we were going to make an amendment to change the agenda for the Honeysuckle Bridge project, but I'd just like to offer a motion to table that until the February 6th meeting, as Gary's expressed, that he needs more time to gather information before he can present a bid process for us. And I'm afraid the other things on the amendment, I'm not sure about.
I think they're self-explanatory. There's reports in the packets. So if we just had a motion and a second to amend the agenda for the four items at this time. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to amend the agenda, yes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Carol Harmon, motion by Ted Morrell. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Takes one motion to...
Mr. Mayor, we need to do a roll call, please.
Oh, we need to do a roll call. I'm sorry. Yes, take care.
Camila Lamons.
Yes.
Ted Morrell.
Yes.
Eric Schein.
Yes.
Darren Brock.
Yes.
Keith Williams.
Yes.
Carol Harmon.
Yes.
Marty Latham.
Yes.
Sean Ingram.
Yes.
Next item is the consent agenda. Excuse me. There's six items on that. Approval of minutes, a special session, approval of minutes, regular meeting, police department news and statistics for December, city court report for December, financial report year end 12/31/06, fire department building division report. Does any council member want to take any of these out of the consent agenda to discuss?
I did have a question. On the minutes, what are we approving? Because we're given minutes and an optional minutes, so...
You were given the minutes of the tape exactly as the meeting went on, then a regular set of minutes for your review. I think the question is, Darren, for the council members to get with Jeanette and let her know which set of amendments or minutes you want from now on. They're both there. Any other questions?
Do we need to make a motion for it's the amended minutes that we're giving?
No. It's the same minutes, except one's in detail. Any further discussion? Do I hear a motion?
I move to accept the consent items as written.
Second.
That's second.
Who made the mo... You made the motion, and Eric seconded.
Roll call, please.
Camila Lamons.
Yes.
Ted Morrell.
Yes.
Eric Schein.
Yes.
Darren Brock.
Yes.
Keith Williams.
Yes.
Carol Harmon.
Yes.
Marty Latham.
Yes.
Sean Ingram.
Marty Gabbert.
Yes, sir. My name is Marty Gabbert. I live at 604 Jackson Place, and I have a couple of questions that I hope I can get an answer for sometime or another. But my questions are concerning the hiring of Mr. Michael Solomon as planning commissioner. All last week and even this week, you can read in the newspapers and get on the internet, people bickering back and forth. I mean, that makes everybody look bad. I mean, but my main concern is, was his salary already in the city budget? Was the city council involved in any way of his hiring? And why wasn't the job put in the paper? Because seeing me like a high-paying job like that would've been put in the paper for, you know, someone else, maybe. Some of this just don't make no sense, all the bickering and everything. But I would like to say one thing. I appreciate Mr. Ted Morrell and some of the other city council members that has guts to stand up and speak what they really think about some of this. Thank you.
Marty, if you'll fill out the top part of this issue sheet, we'll get you a written answer.
Sir, is it all right if I take your word that I'll get an answer from this?
Well, I want to make sure we're answering all of your questions, Marty. Fill out the top part. I need this pen. Thank you. Thank you, Marty. Eric Furnish and Holly Sublett.
I'm Holly Sublett with South Fork III POA Vice President, and Eric Furnish is President of our POA in our ongoing lawsuit with the city of Bethel Heights. We, as the POA of South Fork III, have decided to settle the lawsuit. In the final stages of settling our lawsuit, we have to present to the city a letter asking for certain issues for the city to consider.
Dear City of Lowell and Mayor Perry Long, the South Fork III subdivision through its property owners' association requests that the city of Lowell approve Bethel Heights rezoning of a parcel of land. The rezoned land is located in Bethel Heights and is directly south of the South Fork III subdivision across Apple Blossom Road. By way of background, Bethel Heights rezoned this tract of land from agricultural to industrial and general commercial on June 20th, 2006. The South Fork III Property Owners Association filed suit challenging this rezoning on July 20th, 2006. Both the city of Bethel Heights and the landowner were named as defendants. The South Fork III Property Owners Association requested that Lowell join the pending lawsuit. However, Lowell declined to participate. Subsequently, the landowner of the rezoned parcel filed a counterclaim against the Property Owners Association and the president personally. After a vote of its eligible members, the South Fork III Property Owners Association has decided to settle the pending lawsuit. As part of the settlement, the South Fork III Property Owners Association has agreed to ask Lowell to approve the rezoning, approval, excuse me, to approve the rezoning. Approval of the Bethel Heights rezoning would bring finality to both the lawsuit and objections to the rezoning. The South Fork III Property Owners Association has determined that approval of the rezoning is preferable to continued litigation. Therefore, the South Fork III Property Owners Association requests that the Lowell City Council pass a resolution at its next regularly scheduled meeting to approve the Bethel Heights zoning ordinance, number 220.
And the residents would like it noted that they are very upset that the city did not handle this issue and that we had to.
We'll put your request on the agenda for the next council meeting. Thank you. Ronnie Breeling.
First off, I live at 119 South Brandon. I'm going to start off by saying I may go over the two minutes, and Mayor, if I do, please let me know when my two minutes is up so I can ask the council if I can go on. I have some concerns with the hiring of the planning director also. Now, I know that some of you will agree with me on this, and that's fine, because that is the American way. However, when you have people within the current administration that can do the job and that is qualified to do the job, I believe you should promote them. Now, Bill London, he done the job before, when Mayor Biggers was there. Now, true, he was moved down before Mayor Biggers left office. Now, however, you have Tony Davis, who is qualified to do the job and has all the paperwork and everything else, and worked for an engineering firm, Krafton and Toll, that can do the job. He, so, I don't know why he wasn't offered the job. Now, just like Marty Gabbert, I commend the council members that have stood up and spoke up for these on this. Now, Alderwoman Carol Harmon said that if it didn't work out, that Michael Solomon could always be fired. I've got a question for Alderwoman Harmon. Who would do the firing on him, on Michael Solomon? Thank you.
Thank you, Ronnie. Ronnie, would you get that pad from Marty and write your issues down on that so we can get back with you?
Yes, sir, but I'm still waiting for my answers from the last time I filled one out.
We're still considering them. Thank you. Marie? It's all right. Come right ahead.
You not familiar with the policies there, Marie?
No, I'm not. Marie Hauserman, 206 Franklin Avenue. I wish to address the comments made by the other two citizens of the community. And first of all, I would like to point out to them that the hiring of personnel is the mayor's, at the mayor's discretion on who he fires. I think the, as I understand, the mayor did consult and discuss this with the council, which oftentimes, in other circumstances, this has not occurred. Also, one should realize, to have an experienced planner, you would be paying far more than the salary that is being given to Mr. Solomon. They are also hard to find. I see nothing objectionable to hiring someone who has been interested, had input insofar as what is going on in our city. I think it would be to the betterment of all if we refrained from utilizing the blogs, I think they call them, on the Northwest Morning News, comments from different citizens. I would think that if people want to make objectionable comments, for example, I have known and noticed some very terrible comments about not only Mr. Solomon, Mr. Long, Mr. Morrell. I think ideally, one should have to give their name to those, but I think we should refrain from jumping into the cesspool. Thank you.
Thank you, Marie. Guy.
Guy Schumaker, 315 Center Drive. Mike Solomon and I have had our disagreements in the past. When Mike was sitting right there, we had quite a few disagreements. And I stand for you, Mayor, and tell you, I support you in hiring Mike Solomon. Now, I owe nobody anything. I don't think I owe you anything, and you owe me anything. But I will support you. Now, I'd like to have some answers from our city attorney. On 4th of January, I gave Tom a letter. Six weeks later, I've heard nothing other than his clerk got sick on him. I think Tom went on vacation in the meantime, too. I'd like to know more...
Tahiti.
Tahiti?
No, Haiti.
I'd like to know more about this contract that was let on the Welcome Center for Lowell. Now, maybe, I'm not the dumbest man in the world, and I sure as hell ain't the smartest one, Mayor, but every time I've been attending a council meeting, and whenever they had bids up, I've been there, and if they modified the bid, it had to go back again to rebid. Now, I don't know what went wrong, but I know there's a lot of Mickey Mouse went on in the last four years in this city, and I'm hoping and praying that this will not happen in this four years. Because I stand before you, Mr. Mayor, I'll tell you right now, if I disagree with you, I will be up here and let you know. But I want you to know, so far, I'll support you 100% in what you're doing. Thank you kindly.
Thank you, Guy. Anyone else? Next item on the agenda is committee reports. Any committee reports?
I think we'd have to have a committee first, wouldn't we?
We're getting there. Old business. Number one, resolution setting 2007 Lowell Council Rules and Procedures. Tom Kicklack.
We can always, we can make more changes, y'all, if you want to. I think that's what y'all want to do.
Any comments in the council?
I'd like to move to pass this resolution.
Second.
Second, second by Ted. Any comments? Roll call.
Camila Lamons.
Yes.
Ted Morrell.
Yes.
Eric Schein.
Yes.
Darren Brock.
Yes.
Keith Williams.
Yes.
Carol Harmon.
Yes.
Marty Latham.
Yes.
Sean Ingram.
Yes.
New business?
That would be Resolution 01, 02-2007.
New business. North Dixieland Line Relocation. Recommendation for award of contract, McClellan Consulting and Engineering, and that also includes, the amended agenda had the, add the gas line on Dixieland also. Gary?
Thank you, Mayor. The, as you can see, we, well, there are two things that are holding up our progress on Dixieland Road Extension to the north, which is a high priority project in the city of Lowell. We have two water main, sections of water main that need to be relocated or lowered. Also, we have gas mains that have to be relocated, and so, before you, on the water mains, we advertise for bids. We were fortunate to receive seven very competitive bids, as you'll see on the second sheet. The low bid was to Chris Ruff Excavating for $60,000 and $55,000, 60,055. The gas project, obviously, there's no bidding there because there's only one Arkansas Western Gas Company in this area, and this is their standard contract for relocation of utilities at $8,971, and we would like to ask the city council to approve our signing of these contracts and move forward with that construction.
Any questions or comments from the audience? Yes, Eric?
One more of the bids open. And when do they advertise?
Okay. Let me see if I have that. Okay, the bids were opened on Thursday, the 21st of December, and it looks like they were advertised on December the 8th and December the 10th. We have a copy of that advertisement in the back of your handout, and the letter from McClellan Engineers cites the bid opening date.
Thank you, Eric. Any more questions from the audience? Questions or comments from the council?
Mr. Carnahan, how long would it take them to do this project? I mean...
It won't, we're, I think we're allowing 60 days or 90 days. We have our engineers here. Do you know what we're allowing in the contract? Forty? Okay.
Is that, is that, are all of them approximately the same amount of time? Are they all saying about the same as far as...
We, well, we're, we have less leverage, I should say, with the gas company, with any utility company. You don't want to pick on Arkansas Western Gas Company, but all the utility companies in Northwest Arkansas are overworked, and they have, it's sometimes difficult to get them there, but we, the, we'll do everything we can to move them at a, at a fast pace. And then the water mains are, actually, the gas main is further north. The major problem is this water main lowering, and so, our engineers reminded me that we gave them 45 days to complete that work.
Do I hear a motion and a second, please?
May I move that we approve these contracts?
Second.
Roll call.
Camila Lamons.
Yes.
Ted Morrell.
Yes.
Eric Schein.
Yes.
Darren Brock.
Yes.
Keith Williams.
Yes.
Carol Harmon.
Yes.
Marty Latham.
Yes.
Sean Ingram.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is the Honeysuckle Street Drainage Improvement.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
At the request of Mr. Carnahan, I'd like to make a motion to table that until the next meeting. He needs more time for consultation and presentation.
Okay. We'll assume it's unanimously tabled. Next item is Castle Rezoning.
Sir, Mayor, is there, as the applicant is coming forward, if I, I want to point out that we had a, we had, we had an amended ordinance that Mr. Kicklack and Ms. Lassiter, I believe, passed out to all of you. I want to make sure that when you, after the property description, it should say that the planning commission recommended approval. That would be the ordinance that we're asking you to approve tonight. Let Mr. McLeod present that.
I'm Bill McLeod, the agent for Allen Castle. We're trying to rezonate tonight 11.65 acre tract at 726 Puppy Creek Road. I just handed out to you a copy of the existing zoning map that shows there is commercial to the north, commercial to the south. Obviously, the interstate is to the east. There's about 844 feet of frontage on the interstate. At the planning commission meeting, Mr. David Matthews was there, is, in that we have reached an agreement with the landowner, Larry Grimes, to the west. There had been a little dispute on some property. We've settled that, and we've also agreed with... And we've also agreed with Mr. Grimes that we're going to make a conservation easement of 40 feet from the center of Puppy Creek back to the, to the east. So that those trees in there will be preserved as a conservation area. And obviously, I want to point out, too, that where we have commercial, we're asking for commercial on the front. He's residential in the back. There's a substantial terrain change between the two, which creates a buffer in itself. But we're also, along with that, but, along with the terrain change, we have an agreement, and Mr. Matthews was here to ratify that in the planning commission meeting, that we've agreed to leave those trees in there as a natural buffer. And that kind of fits in between where the sewer, the new sewer is coming through. There were no objections from anyone else at the, at the meeting. I did, I have talked with Glenn Jones with the cemetery that also abuts on, on, on an area back there. And he was pleased with the conservation of those trees and, and the buffer that that presents. So I'm hopeful that you will see to it that this is a reasonable request. Any questions?
Any comments from the audience? Counsel, any comments?
I would hope that Mr. McLeod got a nice commission for this with all the additional work that went into it.
Do I hear a motion? We suspend the rules?
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules. Read by title only. And put a place on third and final reading, please.
Second.
Second, Carol?
We both did. Marty and I both did.
Any comments? Roll call.
Roll call for suspending the rule is Camila Lamans.
Yes.
Ted Morrell.
Yes.
Eric Schein.
Yes.
Darren Brock.
Yes.
Keith Williams.
Yes.
Carol Harmon.
Yes.
Marty Latham.
Yes.
Sean Ingram.
Yes.
Do I hear a motion? Well, let me read the ordinance first. An ordinance amending the city of Lowell zoning ordinance by rezoning certain lands owned by Allen Scott Castle from residential A, RA, to commercial C.
I'd like to make a motion.
Second.
Make a motion to pass. Second.
Second.
Any comments? Roll call.
Camila Lamans.
Yes.
Ted Morrell.
Yes.
Eric Schein.
Yes.
Darren Brock.
Yes.
Keith Williams.
Yes.
Carol Harmon.
Yes.
Marty Latham.
Yes.
Sean Ingram.
Yes.
Thank you.
Ordinance number 774.
Next, excuse me, Eric?
Eric, that's not wrong. It isn't wrong the way they do it. You just don't have to do that. The, you know, the rule's real clear. It says you shall read the entire ordinance on three separate days unless you suspend the rule. And the rule is, you shall read the entire ordinance on three separate days. So when you suspend that rule, you don't have to read it by title. You don't have to read it, you know, three times. You don't have to vote three times. You just, that rule's suspended. Therefore, the courts have said, you just need to vote. And every, I mean, cities do it all different ways. Some cities, you know, suspend the rule three times. Some read it three times. Some, you know, read the titles, all different ways. But the courts have just said, once you suspend the rule, the rule's out the window. And you just pass the ordinance.
Next item on the agenda is establishing Park Recreation and Special Events Committee. This is the former Parks Committee, but we've renamed it to be more conclusive as to actually what it involves. Councilmember recommendations. Keith Williams. Sean Ingram. Curtis Wagner. Cindy Walatack. Cindy, would you stand up, please? Charles Day. Clyde Ford. Danny Tenness. Matt Carroll. Representative from the city will be Gene Jennerud. Any discussion? Any discussion from the council? Do I hear a motion to pass in second?
I move to pass this amendment.
Any comments? Roll call.
Camila Lamans.
Yes.
Ted Morrell.
Yes.
Eric Schein.
Yes.
Darren Brock.
Yes.
Keith Williams.
Yes.
Carol Harmon.
Yes.
Marty Latham.
Yes.
Sean Ingram.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is the Finance Committee. Previously, this was called the Budget Committee. Councilmembers Marty Latham, Eric Schein, Citizen Nasser Farasham, City Employee Mary Mason. Any comments from the audience? Any comments from the council?
Mr. Long, was there ever an attempt to try to get Brad Spurlock put back on this committee? I know he was involved over the last few years.
No, I didn't, didn't ask him. Nasser came forward and volunteered to be on it.
He's, he's been on there several years.
He's been on there also. Any other questions?
I think if, if Brad showed some interest, he could always be added at a later date if we chose to.
I was just kind of curious. It looked like there were seven or eight people on the parks, and only four on the finance.
The reason there was that many on the parks is we're trying to get better coverage because of the interest in the parks. We're getting people that's highly involved in sports from different parts of the town. And that's, that's the reason there's so many on that committee. Because we want additional public input on these items, Keith. Do I hear a motion second for the Finance Committee? Second?
Second.
Any comments? Roll call.
Camila Lamans.
Yes.
Ted Morrell.
Yes.
Eric Schein.
Yes.
Darren Brock.
Yes.
Keith Williams.
Yes.
Carol Harmon.
Yes.
Marty Latham.
Yes.
Sean Ingram.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is a resolution for Mayor Perry Long to be excluded from Arkansas Public Employee Retirement System. Any comments from the audience? Any comments from the council?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I have to say that I appreciate this. This is a move that I think that will best behave you as trying to work with the city. I think it was a great move.
Thank you, Eric.
Mr. Mayor, why don't you explain to the people how many, how many dollars this will be?
I have excluded myself from the comp, uh, city benefits, which I've asked, and the resolution includes that the amount of $10,863 normally paid for the mayor to participate in these benefits go to a fund for a reasonable city hall. That's $10,863 per year that goes to the city hall. Any comments? That's right. It's right in the, right in the resolutions, Ronnie. Can't be touched, except for a reasonable city hall. Any other comments? Any comments from the council?
Ted has a comment. Ted has a comment.
Yes, Ted.
I just, I, I just wanted to commend you on, on this. I think it's a very generous and, I realize it was a campaign promise, and it's an honorable thing to do for living up to it. I know there's some politicians that don't live up to their campaign promises. With that, I would like to make, move to pass the resolution.
I'd like to second. Any comments? Roll call.
Camila Lamans.
Yes.
Ted Morrell.
Yes.
Eric Schein.
Yes.
Darren Brock.
Yes.
Keith Williams.
Yes.
Carol Harmon.
Yes.
Marty Latham.
Yes.
Sean Ingram.
Yes.
Will be resolution 03-2007.
Next item on the agenda is the signing of the Addendum Public Transportation's Contract. This will have to be approved by the council. Gene Jennerud.
Good evening. You have in your pack, it's a addendum for the continuation of this year's contract with Ozark Regional Transit, Route 48, fixed route. And I have invited Phil Pumphrey, the director of Ozark Regional Transit, to answer any questions you may have regarding that addendum. So I'll give the mic to him.
Mayor member, she's mayor member of council. Thank you for the opportunity to come tonight. The Lowell Collector's not even a year old this year. It's important because it connects the citizen Lowell with Springdale Rogers. We go through the senior citizen center over here to the west, to the Pleasant Road Walmart. It's important to connect the corridor. The economics, every dollar spent on transit turns over six times in the community. One of the benefits for Lowell being in the Ozark Regional Transit is that our capital equipment, we pay 20 cents on the dollar through the Federal Transit Administration. That's local money. 20 cents on the dollar. 50, 50% is matched for both our operating costs. And our preventive maintenance is covered the same 20% as well. So you get a real bang for your buck out of being a member of Ozark Regional Transit. It's an increase this year because we had 11 months in last year's contract. We exceeded the amount that we promised the city we'd do in the contract in terms of hours. We have a two-hour gap in the middle of the afternoon because we didn't have enough money to fund it all year. We're looking to close that gap. We have people waiting to ride the bus during that gap. Our overall ridership for the system last year was up 21.2 at the conclusion of September. Our first quarter this year, system-wide, we're up 19% over the prior period. The growth of Ozark Regional Transit is important to Lowell, just like when the railroad came, when they built I-540. It's important, I think, to keep you as a member. The other cities, we all work together and, and build a better system here for people that can't drive, people that can't afford to drive, people that can't see, people with disabilities. All of our equipment is 100% accessible. You can visit our website at www ozark.org. You can give me a call. I'd be happy to visit with you. Any concerns or questions you might have about the, the system we have. And I'm happy to take any question you might have.
Any questions from the audience? Ronnie?
He said it's accessible and everything, and it's available for all the citizens that can't walk or can't drive or, and everything, all the time. There's been times that I, I walk everywhere I go because I'm athletic. It has stopped like at the railroad tracks up by the school and asked me where I'm going. And I walk all the way to J.B. Hunt up there. And I tell them I'm walking to J.B. Hunt. And they say, well, we're just going up to Rogers. And they, and they close their doors and they go. They don't offer the ride. They just go. So I'm asking you, what does Lowell need with the bus like that?
Thank you, Ronnie. Kelly?
Kelly Kennedy, 219 Robinson Avenue. I would just like to show my appreciation to Mr. Pumphrey and to Ms. Jennerud and to the council for supporting this in the past, and I hope you continue to support it. I myself have ridden the bus numerous times. It, I've ridden the bus in California and many other places. And these are some of the cleanest, well-kept buses that I have ever seen. You may wonder why, when I have a vehicle, do I, do I take the bus? Simple economics. It's, it's there. It's saved me money, you know, quite a few times. And, you know, frankly, everybody at City Hall gets a real kick out of it when they say, oh, there's Kelly coming off the bus. So it, the, the drivers are very personable. The rate is very good. And I think it benefits, I, I sit there sometimes with people that are my age that are going to Springdale to work. People that are elderly from the, they stop at the senior home first, the apartment, senior apartments. And these seniors would have no other way to get out. And this has been just a wonderful thing. So thank you for your time, and I just hope that you all will continue this fabulous service for Lowell.
Thank you, Kelly. Eric? Bill Latham? I just saw Eric come in.
Mayor and council, I'm Bill Latham, Level 216 Bluff Drive. I know you, they've been running this, I think, for 11 months. But my concern is how many people a day ride it, which it costs us a day for hauling people around. We need to know all these numbers, I would think, before we jump in here and go to add more hours to it and doing this and that. But that's from a business standpoint. So I'd, I'd like for people to really consider this. Are we riding 10 people a day and it's costing us $30 a day? What's the deal, you know? Thank you.
You know, a lot of people talk about running the city council like a business, and there's some, there's some truth to that aspect. But there's a lot of things that government does that aren't business-oriented. Transit's one of those things. I don't think you're going to put a price on a senior's independence to go to the grocery store. I don't think you can put a price on people going to the doctor. I don't think you can put a price on people's ability to go to educational opportunities with transit. This is not an uncommon argument for people to make about transit. It only benefits a few. It costs a lot. It does cost. It's because it's a labor-oriented business. We have drivers. We have drivers that spend money in the community. We have seniors that depend on us to go to the doctor. We have people that ride our bus to go to dialysis. They don't have a way to go, and sometimes they do. But sometimes, they can't ride the bus after dialysis because they're too sick after their treatment. This is not a question about, is it a business? We run it like a business. We're very efficient. I have a board composed of four judges of the four counties. I have the five mayors, who are their designees. We carry over 20 people a day. Our ridership is growing. Our ridership is continuing to grow. As we add more service, our existing routes are growing. But this is a business that I choose to be in because of the benefits it provides to the community. It's not always obvious to those who don't use it or those who don't need it. But it is important, and as Northwest Arkansas grows, there's going to be a greater need for transit because everybody in this room has one thing going for them. Besides, they have to pay taxes, they're going to get older. And as you get older, you have a chance, a greater chance of having a disability. So, yeah, we're talking about adding more service. We have people waiting for the bus when we have that two-hour gap in the afternoon. We here in, 11 months last year. But I'd be happy to answer the question of any of these gentlemen. I'll give them my business card, they can call me. I'll talk to anybody in the community, anytime, anyplace. But this is a very important service that we provide to the community. And sometimes, that's what government does, is provide services to the community. It's not a business sometimes, sometimes it's a service you provide to the citizens. So I just wanted to address that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Betty Pritchett, and I'm at 303 West Robinson in Lowell. And I'm the Regional Property Director for the senior citizens here in Lowell. And I think that if they had known that this had been on the agenda tonight, we probably would have had a room full of your seniors. I do encourage you to vote for this because I live with these people every single day, and I hear the comments that are made about the transit and the bus that comes to pick them up, the personal relationship that they have developed between the drivers, between the past administration. Jean Genereux has been a gem for trying to get this going for our seniors. I would encourage you to vote for this, for the seniors, because what I'm hearing is absolutely true. They depend on this now. This is something the city gave them for the past year or eight to 11 months. Don't take it away from them because you're taking a lot if you do. They depend on this and they need this to get to the doctor, to get to the grocery store, to get even to go Christmas shopping. They were able to get on this bus and go over to Kohl's and do some shopping. A lot of these seniors do not have families here. They have no way to go anywhere. The bus transit has been an absolute plus for them. Please, please, keep this going for the seniors.
Thank you, Betty. I think Darlene, did you want to speak? Marie, she had her hand up first. You'll be next.
My name's Darlene Baker, and I'm the Court Clerk for the City of Lowell. And I haven't really ever taken much of an interest in this transit bus, but here as of late, we have been having people that are using the bus to come to court. And I want to know if this is normal? Is this an okay reason for them? If it is, you know, we could begin to spread it a little bit more for the people in the court or the people making our payments that have court. If we had cards or, you know, even something that we could post that they could call this number. We hear many, many excuses, and the best one is, you know, is I don't have a ride. You know, sometimes I don't have a ride or I forgot, you know, that's the number two. But anyway, if this service is available to practically anyone, you know, for the people that have court. If you could give me something. And also, as far as what it benefits, if the people will use this to come to court, it's going to bring in a little bit more revenue and it'll keep us from having to do warrants on them for not showing up. So anyway, I support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Darlene. Marie?
I think we should realize that the different parties that have discussed here are not really in opposition. I think it is important to have the service. But I think it's very important for the council members to know exactly how many paying customers you have in a week's period of time, in a month's period of time, et cetera, so that you can tell whether this is really... Whether the cost really justifies the service. Even though we acknowledge that it's a nice service, very usable for the elderly, for those who don't have cars and et cetera, you still have to look at your checkbook. And I think the council should be given that information. And I'm saying paying customers because I know when this was started out, we had people riding free, we had then children riding free. And you're a lot more apt to ride it if it's for free. But that doesn't help your pocketbook. So we need to know how many paying customers you're getting. Thank you.
Thank you, Marie. Yes?
We furnish a monthly report to the board, and that includes the mayor. And I have to get your new email address, I got it today from Jean. But we furnish it to Jean and the mayor and the entire board once a month. And we can get those updated statistics to you while we carry and give that to you.
I would appreciate that very much.
A little thing about the free rides. We normally do free rides for good reason. We did a promotion last December on all our fixed routes. I'm talking in 2005. We had a 65% increase in ridership. And we retained 24% of those riders after the promotion. And any businessperson would do that. And we did it again. We had another increase of, I can't remember all my numbers, but we had another increase substantial this Christmas. We did a youth ride free. And for example, we had a lady in Springdale who was worried that she was going to have to buy her son a car to go to practice in the summer for football because she was a single mother. And what happened was, she found out about our promotion in the summer. Her kid rode the bus, she was happy she didn't have to buy a car for him because he was 15 years old. And any of those have teenagers probably appreciate that fact. For example, we did 3,500 trips last year, rounded off. We started out with 141 in March, we did 460 in December. And we have a graph here that we furnished Jean in the past, you can see the ridership.
What's a trip? Is that a passenger?
Yeah.
That's a passenger? Paid passenger?
Yeah. Basically, if you take out the month of December, we went from 141 in the first month to 271 in a span of 10 months. That's a pretty good increase.
That's all paying customers?
Yes, sir. November was paying last year.
The comparison you just made is a paying customers, the growth.
That's total rush, because we probably had it free in the first couple of months. November was not paid, was a paying customer, so it doubled.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, one of the things I'd like to point out is, due to the fact that we have no after-school programs at this time or summer programs, the bus was used by a number of kids to get to the Youth Can organization, the Art Explosion program in Bethel Heights. That is a first for Lowell kids ever in this city. We have people transferring from Springdale to Rogers and from Rogers back to Springdale for the first time in the history of this town because of this bus route. Last year, if you broke it down by the hour, we were paying approximately $19 an hour for the hours that we were awarded through the contract. With the $20,000 increase requested by this addendum, that only increases the per hourly charge to $19.23 when you work the math. We have done research to see if it would be more frugal and more cost-conservative to buy our own bus, hire our own driver, pay our own operation and maintenance costs for the bus. And I think the lowest I could even squeak out with a half a day schedule, not a full-time day, was about $95,000. So it sounds like a lot of money that we're being asked to approve tonight, but it is a bargain. It is a bargain for the lives that you're touching and the opportunities you're affording across many cities. And it is the Parks Department's recommendation to go ahead and approve this contract so we could continue and further increase the services available to our transit riders.
Questions or comments from the council?
Yes, Ms.?
Marty?
Okay, if we did not take this, if we left this as it was last year, we've only done this for 11 months.
Right.
So we're taking, going from $40,000 last year, jumping it up $20,000 to this year. I realize that we didn't run it for a full year last year, but we're still looking at an automatic $20,000 increase. We're adding a timeframe from 2:45 to 4:45, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
What would the contract cost us if we did not add it? If we left it just like it was this year? So we would have a $10,000 increase over last year?
Is that for one month? The last year's contract was for 11.
Exclusion of the two-hour window we're trying to close.
So if 11 months is 40,000, 12 months would be 45. Is that right?
No, it's 12 months would be 50,000. What we do is, we match your money with federal money. And we have a budget that we put together every August. Two months prior to our fiscal year, starting in October, this is due to the Highway Department because of our rural funding. And the board approved it last year. We had it based on the conversation with the prior mayor that we were going to close the gap because it looked like we were being successful attracting riders. So it looks like it's, I'd have to go back and run the numbers, but it looks like it's about $50,000. And one of the things I might also point out is, we also donated a van to the city that the city took possession of last year as well for no charge. So I think we've had a good partnership. I think we're showing results, and that's what people like to see. And it's continued to grow. I'd love to have you continue and expand your service just a little bit and continue forward. I really would. I think it's good for the economy, I think it's good for the citizens. You've heard a number of people talk for it. And I think, you know, I appreciate the comments that people have and the questions, they're very good questions. And this is a valuable service, I really would like to see us do that.
Thank you. Any more questions?
One more comment. Mayor Long suggested, when he first had a meeting with me about the Ozark Regional Transit, is looking at individuals in the community that had an interest in transit to see if they'd be willing to help with some of the costs that we're having to increase this year. And Tom Imbach with the senior apartments has agreed to meet with us tomorrow, and we may be talking to him about offsetting some of this $20,000 increase. So I hope to have good results from that, and I hope the mayor can work that negotiation with Mr. Imbach because he's a very generous person. Did you have a question, Marty?
Carol?
Carol?
Go ahead, Marty.
Ms. Harmon?
What is the cost of this for the City of Lowell? The total cost? Now, our part is $40,000 for last year.
For last year, yes.
We approve this, it'll be $60,000. What is the actual cost with government funds included to run Ozark Transit?
We pretty much double your operating cost. I'd have to break those numbers up. Well, it's not all operating, some of it's maintenance. We also furnish a vehicle that we don't charge for because we already purchased it. I can break those numbers out and furnish it back to the mayor to pass out to city council. I'd be happy to do that. But, I mean, I have to split it out into operations.
Roughly, we're speaking $120,000.
Pretty close, yeah.
And we're paying half of that.
Yeah. For example, the vehicles we use to service the City of Lowell cost about $55,000 to $60,000. We pay $12,000 for those. We have maintenance people that work on them, 80% of their salary is covered. Our drivers, 50% is federal. And we have some overhead. We have staff, we have schedule takers, we have dispatchers, we have a road supervisor. So we have about almost 50 employees to furnish the service we do in this area.
I have another question. Out of everyone that rides, does any of their funds go to offset this?
What happens under the federal transit regulations is that, let's say we take a dollar in. A dollar goes to offset the operating cost both on the local side and on the federal side. So it's kind of a, it's like kind of a zero-sum game. That's the way the federal transit does it with local ridership fares. We take in about, system-wide, we take in about $75,000 annually in ridership fares out of a budget of 2.4 million. That's our total budget this year.
Marty, did you have a question?
Okay, so you're saying that the cost increase over the contract last year, if it were the same as it was last year, would be approximately $6,368. That would say that if we had operated 12 months last year, we would have paid $43,632. So if you're saying it would be $50,000, you're saying we're going to increase about $6,000 over what it cost us last year for the same kind of service. Is that correct? You said it $50,000 if we kept it just like it was this year? Last year? Right? Is that what you said?
I think that's pretty close.
Okay, and I'm estimating that $43,632 for 12 months of service, based on last year's, what it averaged out to each month? In other words, the contract was for, if you had to pick up that extra month that we didn't operate?
An extra month is about 210 hours, I believe.
Yeah.
10 hours a day, 21 working days. And then you're talking two hours a day for 250 days, which is 500 hours. You're about 710 hours.
The question, what I'm saying here is, it was, would have been $43,000 last year had we operated the whole year.
No, that's not correct. We charge $40,000. We had a set number of hours.
That was for 11 months.
Right.
Right?
Right.
Based on the fact that $40,000 was 11 months, just on an average, that would have made, if we had worked for 12 months, $43,000.
I don't understand how you come up with an extra $3,000 a month.
An extra month? You take $40,000 divided... By 11, that was $3,636 a month.
We have some additional capital costs. Like I said, we did not charge for a vehicle the first year because we have a certain number of spares we maintain in our fleet. Basically, we're carrying another vehicle to provide the service.
I guess what I'm getting at is, we had a contract with you last year.
That's correct.
I'm trying to determine, compare apples to apples here. I want to know what our actual cost of...
It was about $19 an hour.
It is.
$19 an hour. What happens is, you see, I have to get back to, see, this is, federal transit requires us to match a certain amount of money. So what we take is our deficit based on what we're projecting in service for the year. And then we come back and we have a deficit of, say, $800,000. And then we divide that based up on revenue hours for the cities, based on the number of hours. It's the clearest way to give an accurate representation, a fair representation to the cities, what they're paying for a service, is basing on a service of revenue hours. So I'd have to go back and get last year's calculations and this year's calculations and bring them back and furnish them to you. Because I really don't want to stand here and make assumptions based on this year's numbers and this year's numbers because things change in our organization depending on who's having the number of service hours and what their contribution is. I'd be happy to do that, but I don't want to tell you something that is not totally accurate. For example, the City of Lowell has one bus, 10 hours a day. It's roughly 10 hours a day, it's about 2,500 hours. We provide a bus and a half for Bentonville, and they're paying $119,000 annually. Rogers is 121, they're about a bus and a half. They share a pair of transit vehicles between the two of them, they both have a fixed route. The City of Springdale has two fixed routes, the City of Fayetteville has two fixed routes. And then they have about three pair of transit vehicles that share in between the cities. They're both paying about $180,000 a year. Springdale is actually 180, Fayetteville's 185,666. That's the four, five big cities, that's what the contributions are. So the contributions are comparative based on the revenue hours.
My question was very simple. If we kept it exactly like it was last year, what would the cost be to us? So I could determine an increase over what we had last year.
If you're talking the same number of revenue hours, it'd be about $50,000. If you're talking the same number of revenue hours, it'd be about fifty thousand dollars. We had a tremendous jump in fuel last year. We have wages go up. We have some.
I needed to know. That's all I was asking you.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm just trying to be thorough to answer your questions best I can.
Before you walk away there, Phil, our contract ended December thirty-first. Did, did the buses run today? I'd like to make a motion that we accept this contract.
Second.
Any comments?
Jean, I have a question. If I got on the bus at seven o'clock in the morning, what time will I get back home?
Well, you'd have a choice to get home from anywhere from seven, well, you'd have a thirty-five minute ride. Eight fifteen to five fifteen. You might get stuck at Walmart from two o'clock to five o'clock, but, you know, you can shop for a while.
So, the bus makes continuous circles?
Yes, ma'am.
Through the route?
Yes, ma'am, and, yes.
Okay.
Any other comments?
What was the reference to thirty-five minutes? Is it thirty-five minute loop?
Pretty much. I, I think they timed it out, maybe thirty-five to forty minutes. We, we were looking at trying to add Pinnacle Promenade, but until the off-ramp gets finished, the traffic's just too squirrely to make that route in the time we have. But, that's, that's hopefully going to happen. Well, that increased our cost. You'd have to walk from, you know, Coles at this point.
It depends on, we try to time the routes. An optimum route takes about an hour one way, whether it's a round trip or round. That, that's the longest you really want to do it in the business. Most cities have thirty minutes. Some are more, depending on the ridership. But, we have to have a route that, schedule that's dependable. It's basically about an hour from Springdale to Rogers because we stop. We come through a lot of traffic, a lot of stoplights. You know, it takes a while to get up and back. Pinnacle has its own issues with the on-off ramp that I don't know if anybody really knows when it's going to open. We'd love to serve it. I've talked to the mayor of Rogers about it. Uh, he's not willing to do it at this point until they get some of their other infrastructure in place and what he does eventually. I don't know. But, um, we've had some requests to serve it, but we kind of designed the route in the meantime to connect up people going through Lowell, coming to Lowell, going from Lowell to Springdale, Rogers, going to the Walmart, which is actually in Rogers, and taking care of those needs. We tried to do as much as we can with the route and the time allotted.
Ted?
Mr. Mayor, I, I would like to request from you what your recommendation is on this. I know you haven't had anything to do all month, and you probably had a lot of time to look at this, so.
Thanks, Ted. I have looked at this, and personally, I have questions as to whether we should close the two-hour gap at this time. You're looking at a ten thousand dollar increase. If we could run it another year, just extend the present contract for another year, that would give us more paying customer data so we could take a better look at it. I, I really think this first year is unfair to you because once you start something up, it takes a while for the word to get out, Philip, and if we continue that same contract, then we'll have a two-year span and the initial startup numbers will go away.
Also, Mr. Mayor, the manager of the Senior Citizens Center was, they were going to have a meeting with him tomorrow to see what his input was going to be to this.
I, I think if, if the council votes for the present schedule, Philip, and the senior housing people contribute enough to pay the difference or more, then I would be all in favor of expanding that schedule.
Well, we offer service at the pleasure of the mayor and the council.
I understand that, and we appreciate that. We appreciate it, Philip. Uh, I, I, that's my feelings, and I wasn't aware of the meeting with, uh, the gentleman that owns the Senior Citizen Housing over there. But, uh, is that tomorrow?
It's on your schedule, Mayor, at eleven o'clock. It was rescheduled from nine to eleven.
I didn't see it, but we should have an answer pretty quick from him, I would think. You know, he would almost be prepared to give an answer on the spot.
That's fine. I mean, uh, I've worked with Tom before on the contract. It can always be amended.
If we go ahead and, Pat, continue the same schedule for twelve months, then if they give us some money to help with this, we can come back to the council next meeting and ask for an agenda. Is, is that, uh, would that help you, Bill?
I, I'd be comfortable if, if, based on the conversation we have with the prior administration and, and what we've had as a representative of the prior administration on the board and what we voted for the budget, if you want to continue with the same schedule for twelve months, would be helpful. And then any additional service to do or any changes that we could discuss at a later date because, as has been pointed out, we're already running service based on the representation we had from the City of Lowell, which we, as far as I know, I still have to this day, and go with that.
Okay.
So, but, that's what I'd like to see because I feel a little uncomfortable operating service without, uh, with a, a large change in the.
I understand that. Uh, Tom, can we do that? Can we amend that agenda or, uh, contract at the next meeting?
Is there a motion and a second? I was wondering where we're at with that. Okay.
I think we're in discussion. Yeah, Mayor, you are, um, the, as long as this money is budgeted, you're empowered to execute this contract. And so, it is, this is a great discussion that y'all are having, but if y'all are going to give sort of guidance, that's fine. But, when you reach a contract that, that you think is, uh, the best thing to, to execute for the city and the money, this council has put that money at your disposal, then you can execute that contract so we can work on this contract. We don't have to, in other words, you don't have to say yes or no to what you have now. You can say, this is what we're going to do or make some contingencies on what we'd like to do, and then sort of give your mayor instruction on what you'd like to see done. But, you don't have to say kind of yea or nay right now. You can, um, we have worked on the contract together. We can continue to do that.
See, right now, there is no budget money for this contract. That's why it has to go before the council. Our budget will be, will be approved February the sixth. Three weeks away, two weeks away, Phil. See, uh, right now, our budget is for same salaries for employees, minimum city operating expenses. Until we get an amended budget prepared for February the sixth, anything over and above that has to go to the council to be approved. That's why we're here tonight.
I mean, I, I'd like to have some reassurance that the council and the mayor is going to stand behind the prior obligation.
I don't understand.
Well, we had a budget approved by the board, which Lowell sits on it, and we're already operating service into the Lowell's new fiscal year. It's already my second quarter of my fiscal year, which we carry over, but, uh, I'd like to have so, at least some reassurance that, that we're going forward and we're not discontinuing the contract, and I've got service out there. There's no reimbursement and no intentional reimbursement. It's kind of.
Let me ask you a question. Would you clarify just what you said? You say the board authorized a contract for how long?
No. The Board of Ozark Regional Transit approved our budget for this fiscal year, which I'm already in my second quarter.
Okay.
That's, that's what I meant.
Okay, okay.
Based on what?
Based on what?
Did you say Lowell made a commitment to this board?
Well, there is some, there is some sort of, uh, I think, Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, if, if I have a representative from Lowell on behalf of the mayor, or the mayor in this case, sitting on the board and approving a budget, there's some sort of understanding that we're going to continue into the next fiscal year with the budgets that's approved by our representative in Lowell. You know, we have variations in terms of the amount that comes out of the budget process in the cities, but we're already operating in the first, what, sixteenth day of January. I guess I'm just looking for some clear intention from the City of Lowell, what you're intending to do. I guess I'm assuming from what I've heard tonight that you're going to continue the contract at the same level of hours and roughly the same rate of, of remuneration.
Actually, we, we've, we've got a motion on the table, one a second, to approve the amended contract right now, which I, I think the service is great, and I have no problem with expanding it and filling that two-hour gap, a gap. I think it's a, it's a great service for our citizens, and, uh, I don't know if you guys want to continue to discuss it. I'm ready for a vote. It's up to you guys.
Carol?
I think what Perry's trying to say, and correct me if I'm wrong, Perry, I don't want to put words in your mouth that aren't there, that we will accept it the way it's written for the first eleven months.
There is a motion on the table.
I understand that, Keith. We're trying to clarify some things here. Accept it for the first eleven months. Is that not correct, Perry?
I'd like to call the mo, the motion to vote right now.
Would that be a called a question?
I think, I think we all understa, I think we're saying the same thing. We're just saying it in different words. She's asking the first eleven months of the year. She was asking you if that was a correct interpretation. I'm fine with that if that's what your interpretation.
Excuse me, Mary, can you tell us when the next payment is due to Ozark Transit?
It'd be April first.
That's this one right here, right?
There's an agenda item after this agenda item for approval, so, um, they're, they're requesting payment now.
Is this a normal billing period is what I'm asking? This is, this is a normal billing period. We always pay this in January, January first. Okay. First of each quarter. So, we're starting the new quarters, what you're saying. I believe we have a motion on the floor.
Yes, sir, and I believe it's also been called a question. I believe it's also been called a question by, uh.
Roll call.
Kamala Lamons?
Yes.
Ted Morrell?
Yes.
Eric Schein?
Yes.
Darren Brock?
Yes.
Keith Williams?
Yes.
Carol Harmon? Yes. Marty Latham?
No.
Sean Ingram?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is approval for the first quarter of our fair share for the contribution, fifteen thousand dollars.
That would be the invoice for the next three months, according to this addendum contract.
Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, so I understand if we, if we pay this and we end up deciding for whatever reason, if we end up changing the contract, this would just be a little bit of an overpayment. That the payment wouldn't be an issue. I mean, we, if we change the contract, where it's ten thousand for a quarter, we would
We can't change.
Be credited for a partial.
I think if you change the contract, you've got to renegotiate it because.
Oh, absolutely. That's what I'm saying. I mean, if we signed a new contract, go ahead and pay in this fifteen thousand, now it would still apply to a new contract as much as it applies to.
We just approved the contract.
But you approved the contract for the extended hours.
That's right. We did.
I don't understand what you mean by changing the con.
Well, you're, you're discussing amending the contract with them, negotiating something new as a possibility, and so if that happened, I was just wanting to say that.
That was only if the current contract extended.
All right. All right, that's fine.
Okay.
All right, we're good.
Okay. Any other questions? Do I hear a motion and a second?
I'll move to approve the payment.
I'll second that.
Any questions? Roll call.
Kamala Lamons?
Yes.
Ted Morrell?
Yes.
Eric Schein?
Yes.
Darren Brock?
Yes.
Keith Williams?
Yes.
Carol Harmon?
Yes.
Marty Latham?
No.
Sean Ingram?
Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Next item on the agenda is request for a building moratorium release from Lindsay Multi-Family Group. Gary, is there anyone here representing that?
Apparently, apparently not. We thought they're, uh, they submitted this. We assumed they would be here. I might just tell you that they, they have submitted an office plan which will, uh, which just now has entered our planning commission's cycle. We'll be reviewing it tomorrow at the technical plant review meeting. We'll be, uh, if it carries forward, then we would hear it in the first week of February at the, um, work session, and then at the planning commission meeting in the third Monday night in February to see if we would approve that. So, uh, a part of that process is to get this moratorium exemption. This rate that they have mentioned in their letter, I think you all have a copy of this letter, is the equivalent of about one point two homes. So, it would be one point two taps. I think we only have less than twenty taps available. However, we hope that the new sewer main will be built in July and that these kinds of questions will go away. So, um, I don't know if it's appropriate for you to approve this without someone being here to request it, but that's the, I'm just sharing the information with you, and it's up to you whether you want to do it tonight or wait, uh, till later. They're not going to get their planning commission approval until the third week of February, so.
Any comments?
I would like to move to table this until we have some, by, I'll second.
Your second?
I'll second that.
Any objection? Pass. Excuse me.
Typically, we get a letter from Springdale, uh, but there, I guess, you know, it's just procedure, I guess, but, uh, do we have that? Do you know if they've sent in a letter?
They have requested the letter. I talked to Springdale today, and they have, um, Springdale has not responded to their letter yet.
Roll call on tabling, uh, request.
Kamala Lamons?
Yes.
Ted Morrell?
Yes.
Eric Schein?
Yes.
Darren Brock?
Yes.
Keith Williams?
Yes.
Carol Harmon?
Yes.
Marty Latham?
Yes.
Sean Ingram?
Yes.
Let's take a five-minute break. Next item on the agenda is the appointment of Lloyd Showalter as Planning Commissioner, replacing Mitch Wright effective immediately. Lloyd has lived in Northwest Arkansas for forty years, five years, uh, the most recent five years in Lowell. He's a veteran U.S. Marine, thirty-five years for Southwestern Bell, retired. He's worked on the Election Commission. He's a member of the Kiwanis and has offered his service voluntarily to serve on the Planning Commission. Lloyd, do you want to come up? The council members. The council members have any questions?
Mr. Mayor and council, I'd like to first express my appreciation and consideration for this position. And I'm happy to answer any questions from the council.
Any questions from the council?
Budget, or the agenda amended to do this, 'cause, okay.
Yes, it's item number 10.
Okay. I, uh, I think, uh, Mr. Showalter would be a great addition to the Planning Commission. However, I, 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 I would rather him take my position on the, the Planning Commission than, uh, Mr. Wright's. So if, if, if he were to fill that position, I would have no problem with it at all because I think he would gr, be great for the Planning Commission.
You're wanting to switch?
Yes.
From Mitch Wright to Keith Williams?
Yes.
Does the council have any problem with that?
My only questions would be the, uh, the terms.
Pardon?
When, when the ta, when the term would end?
When the new appointment would end?
Yes, sir.
They're for three years, but it starts back in, I believe in June, doesn't it, Keith? Isn't that when your term expires? Starts back in June, so there's two and a half years left on the appointment.
Actually, I think, I think the appointment would be for only five months. I think the, I think, um, the term ends in June. My term ended two and a half years ago. And it was just never...
Two and a half years ago?
Yes, and it just wasn't filled. Uh, I, I think it's in five months. The term that Mr. Showalter would, would fill would be, he'd have to come before us in five months.
Yours and Mitch's was the same, wasn't it, Keith?
Yes, it was.
Both of them are about to expire in June.
It was the same.
And I believe Mr. Grams is also up at this time. He's just, he's just continuing on in, in that, uh, that fashion, but...
So we're talking about five months, then a reappointment?
Yes.
That would be June?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Any other questions? Do I hear a motion in a second?
Is this gonna be to replace Mitch or Keith?
Keith wants to switch. His term is up also.
I guess that depends on the motion.
Depends on the motion, okay.
I'd like to make a motion to replace Keith Williams with Mr. Lloyd Showalter for the Planning Commission.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Sean Ingram?
Yes.
Marty Latham?
Yes.
Carol Harmon?
Yes.
Keith Williams?
Yes.
Darren Brock?
Yes.
Eric Schein?
Yes.
Ted Morrell?
Yes.
Kamala Lamons?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, and congratulations. Next item on the agenda is the mayor's State of the City address. Council members, Rogers Lowell Chamber of Commerce, the press, and members of the audience. The difference between where we are and where we want to be is what we do. I want to use this State of the City address to focus on what we want to be and what we will do to take us there. If our city, our citizens, and our business unite in these priorities, we will all prosper. Over the past years, Lowell has been held back by the same continuous problems, lack of sewer, water, and streets for additional development and services to our citizens. This July, our predicament of lack of sewer taps will end as the Puppy Creek Interceptor Line will be completed. In order to maximize the new opportunities that this new sewer capacity will provide, I am making two strategic changes. First, I am establishing a utilities committee to cover all areas of the city to provide input and help with implementation issues. This committee will consist of two council members and three citizens from different areas of the city. Secondly, I am restructuring Gary Carle to make sure he is able to keep the city growth through infrastructure expansion as his primary focus. The difference between where we are and where we want to be is what we do, specifically establishing priorities and target objectives and developing action plans. As we move into the future, many of our obstacles are being addressed so proposals can move forward in a timely manner and we can reach our goals for improved service to our citizens and promote growth as opportunities develop. Our main areas being addressed now are infrastructure and development. This includes streets, water, and sewer. These areas contain four major functions. They are planning, engineering, construction, and financing. I am in the process of restructuring our organization to streamline the start-to-finish process, which will more clearly define targeted responsibilities and accountability with added emphasis on serving, solving our city's problems. Gary Carnahan will be in charge of all infrastructure, engineering, and construction. For example, by working with our Step Park Bonding Company, we will be able to switch $1 million from the park portion to sanitary sewers and stay within the bond requirements, all of which is designated money. This moves, Gary, this move enables Gary to me, move forward in implementing the sewer line proposals, which will provide approximately 500 acres of available land for primarily commercial and industrial development. In addition to the $1 million for sewer projects, we plan on taking an additional $150,000 from the bond to match the grant we have won. This will double the $300,000 already set aside for the park to a total of $600,000. In addition, parks receive approximately $125,000 of designated money each year from the 1% sales tax passed in 2003. This will bring a total of the park designated funds to approximately $850,000 over the next two years. Streets, water, and sewer plan for Dixieland Road are in their final stages. We have converted the construction phase from city employees to utilizing a road contractor as soon as the design stage is complete. An integral part of our priority of moving Gary to full-time infrastructure, engineering, and construction is establishing a full-time planning director, Michael Solomon. Mike will work to make sure that all planning and related requests move through the process in a timely manner. Financing of city projects is a difficult process, especially when the city receives no revenue from water and sewage usage. This goes to Springdale and Rogers. This creates special problems for us to recoup our expenses so we can move forward with additional projects. Our finance director, Mary Mason, will be involved in the process as we endeavor to develop ways to finance and pay for additional projects. Outside purchases and professional services will be reviewed for approval. Just because budgeted items are approved does not mean we need to spend the money. This review is necessary as changes in priorities occur during the year. Melanie Houston, administrative coordinator, will start soon on developing a Lowell business directory for distribution to all Lowell citizens and businesses. Our goal is to make our citizens more aware of the businesses in Lowell, which will increase their business and therefore generate additional sales tax for our city. I will complete our city's organization this week. In addition, our 2007 revised budget will be ready for finance committee review Tuesday, January the 30th, then council approval on February the 6th. A note of interest, Mr. Rhett Garner, owner of the World's Gym, was in to see me Thursday. He is ready to start construction on the gym in February at Pleasant Grove Road in 71B with a completion date of January 2008. Lowell's World Gym will be the largest franchise in the world. Some amenities in this family-oriented proposed health club will be separate children, co-ed, men and women's workout facilities, one-quarter mile indoor walking path, three swimming pools, daycare, et cetera. The facility will be open 24 hours a day, seven days a week. The gym will be closed from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. on Sundays. I want to remind you about the mayor's forum, the second Thursday of each month, starting February the 8th, 5:30 to 6:30 and longer if needed, at Razorback Pizza's conference room in the L.A. Plaza. This is for citizens who have issues and questions regarding our city. We have the organization and the ability to make our city better for those living here, for our local businesses, and to encourage others to join us. This does not mean there will not be obstacles along the road. There will be. But if we stay united, our city, citizens, and businesses will prosper. The difference between where we are and where we want to be is what we do. We will establish specific priorities, target objectives, and develop action plans to move Lowell forward. Please join us and stay united with us. Thank you and God bless. We have one item left, and that's setting of committee meetings. One request is the, uh, is the finance committee on January 30th.
Sir, you said that would be available on the 30th? You said that will be available on the 30th?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'd like to, to see if we can move that for, uh, the 30th at about 7 o'clock, if that would be possible?
The 30th. Fireman's Conference Room. Pardon me? Okay, thank you, Leroy. Anybody have any questions about that? All the council members are invited to come if you want to, but this is a preliminary meeting with the committee. Do I hear a motion?
Yes, sir, I have made a motion. I'll second the motion.
Any comments? Roll call.
Darren Brock?
Yes.
Keith Williams?
Yes.
Eric Schein?
Yes.
Kamala Lamons?
Yes.
Ted Morrell?
Yes.
Marty Latham?
Yes.
Sean Ingram?
Yes.
Carol Harmon?
Yes.
About the Parks Committee, I think the, uh...
I think we need to meet to kind of discuss, discuss, uh, what's going on in the parks. As far as, I know you had some, uh, some changes on the, on, uh, I guess, the, the park plan. Maybe we could, uh, meet, I don't, uh, Jean's gone. I'd like to kind of get with her and find out what, what's a good day for her and what's a good day for you. Um, and I don't, I don't know if my committees or all the members are here tonight, but, uh...
No.
I'm pretty, pretty much any, any that's good for me.
Okay, look, uh...
Except, other than I have 30...
We can get, we can get with Jean and have her call all the members. Anybody has any suggestions, let Jean know. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make motion to adjourn, sir.
Second?
Second.
Any objections? Roll call. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it.